Good evening and welcome to the Lake Havasu City Council meeting. I now call the meeting to order on Tuesday, September 27, 2022 at 6:00 p.m. We'll now have an invocation from Pastor Dean Wiles from Abundant Grace Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance from the Haven Family Resource Center.
All right, well, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this time. How awesome you are. We invite you now, Holy Spirit, to come and fill this place with your peace, with your presence, with your power, with your love. God, we just thank you for this freedom we have to assemble. And God, you know what's on the agenda tonight, and I just pray that you would help each one as they make decisions tonight. God, I pray for your wisdom. God, for those that may have concerns, I pray that you would help them to even express concerns with love, God, and with peace. Lord, we just pray right now, God, for our city council, from Mayor Cal all the way down to our Vice Mayor and city council members. God, we ask even your blessings to be upon each one and our city manager, that all the administrative assistants, the attorney, city clerk, the judges. God, we pray your protection and wisdom over our fire chief, our police chief, and all our emergency responders. God, right now, just keep your hand upon them and use them. Should they be in a dangerous situation, God, I pray that you protect them and give them a way out. And Lord, again, we just thank you for our city. God, we thank you for this country. We pray that you would continue to bless America and may we continue to stand on the principles and truths of your word. God, you are awesome, and it is an awesome privilege to be able to take time at the beginning of this meeting just to honor you and to invite you into this place. Jesus, we love you. And let each one that hears my voice experience and know your love, unconditional love for them. May they experience your grace. God, I pray even for all the students that are here tonight, Lord, that you give them a great experience on how government runs. And Lord, we pray that you bless and bless the families of Lake Havasu, bless the businesses of Lake Havasu, and bless our time together. We love you, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Counsel, Mr. Mayor, I'm Steve Ahrens from the Haven Family Resource Center, board member. Behind me, I have the president and my wife, Danielle Ahrens, vice president, Jeff Sayer and Vicky Sayer, and the director, Mary Lou. Haven Family Resource Center is a nonprofit family advocacy center. It's been providing a safe environment for families in need to access services and resources since 2001. Haven provides services for families in crisis and victims of all crimes. While the majority of the crimes we respond to are child abuse, domestic violence, and sexually sexual assault, we also assist victims of robberies, assaults, home invasion shootings, survivors of homicide, suicide, drownings, and all violent and nonviolent person crimes. Staff is available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We also provide on-scene crisis response where trained advocates go to the hospital, medical centers, court, or accompanying law enforcement to residential scenes to assist families in crisis. In addition to crisis service, Haven also oversees the Mojave County Child Abuse Prevention Councils, which provides community outreach and education, the Food for Kids program, and other educational services to better meet the needs of the community. The Food for Kids program provides food for homeless and at-risk children on the weekends. Haven Family Resource Center is fully accredited member of the National Children's Alliance and the Arizona Child and Family Advocacy Center Network, as well as the Arizona Coalition to End Sexual and Domestic Violence. We do offer tours to any council member or any member of the community. Please schedule it, though, because there are confidential victim services potentially being provided, so it's not a walk-in tour. You have to call ahead to come down and see what we're all about, and I encourage you to do that. We would ask the community to join us on Friday, September 30 at 6:00 p.m. under the bridge for the reading of the Mayor's proclamation declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. The London Bridge will be lit purple to shine a light on domestic violence and to raise awareness and demonstrate our community's support to victims and survivors. On Saturday, October 1, at 7:30 a.m., our eighth annual Save a Life Domestic Violence Awareness Walk will be held at Rotary Park, and anyone interested can come down, visit the website to register, or you can register onsite that morning. So please join us to raise awareness about intimate partner violence, support victims, and provide resources to our community. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Steve, and thank you to members of the board and Mary Lou for being here. And thank you for the services that you provide to our community. Next item on the agenda is the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell, here. Jenny Koch, here. David Lane, here. Michelle Lynn, here. Cameron Moses, here. Vice Mayor Jim Dolan, here. Mayor Kal Sheehi, here. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Call to the Public. Call to the Public is an opportunity for citizens to address the city council on matters within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. Your comments are limited to three minutes. There is a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have three minutes. Yellow means you have one minute remaining, and red means that your three minutes is up. When you are at the dais, or excuse me, at the podium, please face the council and address the council. Your comments are in direction to the council. If you are here for one of the other public hearings, we do encourage you to wait till that time to speak because we can have a two-way conversation. Otherwise, during Call to the Public, it's not on the agenda, so we can't have a two-way conversation or any feedback or comments from members of the council. At the conclusion of the open Call to the Public, individual members of the council may respond to any criticism made by those who have addressed the council at the end. You do not have to sign up for Call to the Public, but you can. We will start with those that did, so we'll start with Karen Vanderjack. Karen, as you're making your way to the podium, again, this is a business meeting, so this is not an opportunity to clap and hoot and holler and any of those types of things. Just address the council with your comments, and then we'll get on to the next speaker. So Ms. Vanderjack.
Karen Vanderjack, 45-year resident and taxpayer. After so many citizens came forward to address the drag show taking place in your jurisdiction at the last meeting, several citizens were shocked when Vice Mayor Dolan decided to respond to this issue with name-calling, specifically referring to us as bigots. I don't want to stoop to name-calling, but the definition of a bigot is a person who cynically and intolerantly devoted to his or her own opinions, one who regards or treats the members of a group with hatred and intolerance. So who's giving their own opinion here? Who is tolerant? We are sincere citizens begging you all to protect minors who are being used as props in an adult sexual fantasy. I decided to write a letter to Vice Mayor Dolan hoping for clarification. Dear Vice Mayor Dolan, I am trying hard not to go public. I'm doing what the Bible says. Go to the person first. If they don't respond, go to their superiors. If nothing is done, bring it to the public. Matthew 18. I have called you out before about not violating page 22 of your handbook, which states, "Act law: Avoid making recommendations or expressing views that have not been approved by a majority of the members of the board." And you represent without clearly indicating that you're speaking as a private citizen. You said in a very public setting, quote, "Some of you are bigots in the audience," unquote. All you had to say, and this is my opinion and not the opinion of the entire city council and mayor, I'm asking for clarification, continuing with my letter. Was this a consensus of the entire council? If you say no, then I was respectfully asked that you clarify this to the citizens and the council, too, in a public setting. All I'm asking now is that you write back and tell me yes or no, and if the answer is no, then please indicate how you will make it known that it's purely your opinion as a private citizen and not the consensus of the council and mayor. Just one other thing also in my letter, I said you misunderstood what I was asking you to do as a liaison. I didn't want you to insert your opinion. That's the last thing I'd expect or want. As a liaison, I was asking that you relay back to the council for approval of events on the calendar and just have it as an agenda item. We need a consensus from the entire council and mayor. After no response from my letter to council members, I wrote this to all the council members, but only two felt it was necessary to clarify that they did not agree with calling us bigots, councilmembers Campbell and Lynn. I'd ask that at some point tonight, others might clarify their stand as well. This show is not for our entertainment. It is a means for grown men to titillate their sex drive by making fun of women in garish makeup and outlandish prostitute-like clothing and flouncing in front of minors. You're all protecting a modern-day flashers to the children. If minors were not permitted, you will see how quickly this show will go away, so figure it out.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Cindy Johnson. At the conclusion of the Call to the Public, you can respond to any criticism. Cindy Johnson?
Good evening. I just wanted to bring to your attention tonight something. The papers that you're getting are from the Board Committee and Commission Member Handbook. The top page is Lake Havasu City Organized Chart dated April 2021. The second page is also an organization chart dated March 2022. So you'll notice on the top of April 21, the top square there, it says Citizens of Lake Havasu City, and then it says the mayor, and then city attorney, city manager, city magistrate, and so on. On the March 2022 chart at the top is mayor and city council. The citizens are not on there, so I'm asking, is this a misprint? Or have the citizens of Lake Havasu City been deliberately eliminated? These positions and departments still answer to the citizens of Lake Havasu City. If it was easy to remove that square of citizens of Lake Havasu City from the top, then I think it should be easy to put that square, Lake Havasu City citizens, back on the 2022 sheet. I'm hoping that this will happen. I think the citizens deserve to be on top. I think that it is something that is the right thing to do, and I'm looking forward to seeing the revised revision of March 2022. Just a suggestion also, don't print that chart in blue the next time. Just print it in the white. The blue squares are very hard to read, just a suggestion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cindy. We appreciate you bringing that to our attention, and we'll get that addressed. The next speaker is Kristin Guilfoyle. Guilfoyle, sorry about that.
Good evening, Mayor Shi and city council members. My name is Kristin Guilfoyle, and I've been a resident of Lake Havasu City for 24 years, and I'm also a retired business owner from 1999 to 2008. As an LGBT ally, I was also one of the businesses who sided with and promoted Lake Havasu City Pride Event at the Nautical Inn amidst all the backlash I had received. This event was appropriate for all ages, and it was successful. It was our first event, by the way. I now face you tonight, being on the side of the law and as a concerned citizen for our children. Our community has laws and ordinances put into place to protect its citizens, and children are our most precious citizens. Because I personally love going to drag shows myself, that are also known as cabarets, from Boston to Provincetown to New York City to Key West and even Las Vegas, I'm fully aware of what goes on at these drag show cabarets, and I can personally tell you, from my personal experience, none of it should be viewed by anyone under the age of 18. You have men dressed in hyper-feminized clothing, performing in a hyper-sexualized manner with vulgar language and simulated sexual gestures while taking money out of patrons' hands. You also have some performers who don't tuck and show turgidity, which is swelling of their male genitalia bulging from their costumes for shock value, which I find entertaining at times. You wouldn't allow children into a strip club or have a woman in scantily clad clothing gyrating for dollars in front of children under the age of 18. And as a matter of fact, in the state of Arizona, you have to be 19 to be an exotic dancer. If it's illegal for women to dance and perform for dollars in front of children, why are the rules different for men dressing up like women? Before me, I will present the Lake Havasu City Ordinance, Chapter 9.26.030, Prohibited Conduct in Regards to Adult Cabaret Performances. Subsection C says a person below the age of 18 may not provide cabaret entertainment. Subsection D, a person providing cabaret entertainment in the form of dance may not do so in such a manner that any part of his or her body is within six feet of a patron. Subsection E says a person providing cabaret entertainment may not in the course therefore solicit or receive from a patron gratuity or other payments, which means taking money from their hands. I want to be clear that I welcome all forms of self-expression and entertainment, but not when the adult entertainment clearly crosses the line for children. The Arizona Pride Tour website clearly states on their website that there will be adult content in the show. It doesn't say rated G and suitable for children. I love drag shows, but I don't want to watch them with children there. I am requesting the mayor and the city council to issue an emergency amendment to this ordinance, Chapter 9.26030, subsection C, in regards to cabaret shows to not allow any children under the age of 18, even with parental consent, to attend this drag show or any adult content shows in the future. It's against the law for anyone under the age of 18 to perform in a cabaret drag show, then it should be illegal for them not to go to them and attend them. This is about protecting our kids and our community from all walks of life, from seeing adult themed shows that are inappropriate for them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, the next speaker. This is a business meeting. Please, please stop. The next speaker is Dawn Kirk.
Hi, good evening. My name's Dawn Kirk. I'm here to express my concern over the APX proposal to increase the density of its Trinity project up in the foothills from approximately 95 home sites to around 400 homes, including 45 RV townhomes on lots as small as .02 acres. That's 871 square foot. That's row housing. In 2003, the city set forth that the foothills should contain about 697 units, zoned residential estates, which calls for minimum lot size of a third of an acre. Eight acres were dedicated for a school. One acre was dedicated for a fire and police substation. In 2006, the city set forth around 14 acres for the foothills town center and required the developers to build a community park. Around the same time, there were plans for a parkway to allow additional way to get in and out of the neighborhood. 10 years later, the foothills still had no fire or police substation. The town center was reduced from 14 to 8.8 acres. The school site was relocated to Phase 3, which is the Trinity, and the developer was allowed to build the park in two phases based on the number of certificates of occupancies issued. None of these things have ever happened. In 2017, the city did some rezoning, which essentially opened the door to build a storage complex right in the center of our community. We were enticed to build our dream home in the foothills based on the promise of a school, fire and police substation, a parkway, a town center, and estate-sized lots. Many others did as well, and there's many here from the community. But without even realizing what was happening, the foothills community woke up a couple of years ago to a huge, ugly storage unit complex in our backyards instead of a town center. No school, no fire, police substation, no park, no expressway, and then one day, some months back, we woke up to grading on the north side of Cherry Tree. We learned that APX is supposedly grading at risk and now wants to rezone Phase 3 to allow small lots and to build their RV row housing along Cherry Tree. Still no school, still no fire, police substation, still no park, and still only one way to get into the foothills. It's time that this city council commit to representing the interests of its citizens and homeowners rather than only the interests of the developers. Why even bother with stipulations to improve the community when obviously the developers know they don't have to do it? What does the foothills have? We have traffic up and down, heavy traffic up and down Cherry Tree, that's a safety risk. We had two accidents over the Labor Day weekend. We have unacceptable emergency response times. Minutes can be the difference between life and death. We have unsightly storage complexes. That's an eyesore for everybody in the neighborhood. And we have the threat of high-density homes now that's going to cause even more trouble, more traffic, more emergency response time delays, and it's probably going to affect our property values negatively. We're not here to try and stop Trinity. We're here to ask the city council to give the community what it was promised. Build a school, build a fire and police substation, create alternate egress, decrease emergency response times, and don't lower our property values. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dawn. Yeah, there's not an active item in front of the council now on that, but there will be a public hearing of planning and zoning and the council, so I do encourage you to stay tuned so we can have a two-way conversation and finalize that conversation. Thank you. All right, the next speaker is Joe Nevarrez.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I, like Dawn, live up in the foothills, and I'm not going to berate it, belate it, and keep on going and harping on it, but we are very concerned. APX West needs their feet held to the fire. The council 20 years ago, approximately, gave them a foot plan that was proposed by the original developers. We're asking that you hold up to that. Again, the traffic concerns are horrible. As you're probably aware, and I'm sure the chief of police can concur, if you were to go back and look at stats, along with the fire chief, of the response times it is taking, those minutes is somebody's life. Somebody's going to die, and I would not want it to come back and somebody blame a council member or the mayor or anybody in the city because they failed to listen. Okay, it's very important. Again, we don't have a problem with APX's project. Build. Stick to the original plan. Stick to the original development. But we also need to be concerned about the infrastructure, not just the traffic, not just the police response, the fire response. We need to be concerned about the roads, traffic lights, water. We all know we're in a huge drought. Is there enough water up there? Are they going to be able to put in enough, excuse me, are they going to be able to put in enough water facilities to support all of those homes up there? Are they considering the roads they're going to have to put in to help alleviate the traffic? And what it's going to do to those neighborhoods they're now going to go through to put another road in? It's not just affecting us, it's affecting those other neighborhoods as well. So we need to take that into consideration. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Teresa Burke-Byle.
Good evening, Mayor and council, Lake Havasu citizens. The first time I came to this city council meeting not too long ago, I came in as a lamb. I wanted to see what the city council was about, wondered if you were keeping the same good things about Lake Havasu that I came here for. I've hence found out not. I have a particular issue I wish to discuss this evening. Mayor Sheehy, you've received this letter, I believe, from Rebecca Jerry. This morning, I woke up and I had a very heavy heart regarding some issues that came up with some language that was supplied regarding Lake Havasu citizens. I am in the process of making a formal complaint against Vice Mayor Dolan, and this is for the comment of us being bigots. How dare you? How dare you? You work for us. This is your, these are your constituents. We are your employers. You are not our employer. How dare you speak to us that way? Unacceptable. On August 19, on the Speak Out thing with Terrence Concarren, for those who don't know, he's apparently the CEO of Go Lake Havasu, we've been addressing about the not having children at the drag show because we, too, feel it is inappropriate. During this conversation, Terrence Concarren said, and I'd be happy to tell him, it's just, I don't think he's here tonight. They were asking about our response to this drag show, to which he proceeded to say, "The citizens of Lake Havasu are full of hate and bigotry." And then on September 13, at the city council, about 2.55 minutes in, this is when Vice Mayor Dolan concurred and said that we are bigots. And what I found interesting, even further beyond, is that after you said this, the audacity that you had to say that to your employer, the galley got a little excited that I like to be called bigots, and you proceeded to say, "Excuse me, but can I not speak and show a little respect, please?" I'm trying to understand, but I'm not liking what I'm seeing, and as a resident, a citizen here, I'm willing to stand up for my rights and the rights of these citizens. You further went on to say that you are the liaison to Go Lake Havasu. Now, my question for you is, for whom are you liaising? Because you are factually not liaising for us, because you are not representing what we want you to represent. Quickly, I'm going to go to the Board of Directors tomorrow to the Go Lake Havasu to express this same concern, and if there is not a resolve, I will continue up the ladder until I get one. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Stephen Tumminello.
Good evening. At the last city council meeting, I was unable to attend. I was over in California, representing Sheriff Mack and the Constitutional Sheriffs and Peace Officers Association with training some of the sheriffs and patriots in the community over there. So I watched the city council meeting late at night. I had no idea it was going to run three hours. Started around 11 o'clock, and it went on almost till 1:32 in the morning, and I was surprised to see how many new faces we had, how many people got up to speak regarding the drag queen show that is slated for next February. I really was concerned when the gentleman got up and talked about the incident in Texas where Antifa showed up armed with AR-15s, and that was back in June in the Dallas area. I did a little research on this. They also had an incident in Roanoke, Texas, August 29, and just a few days ago in Katy, Texas, right outside of Houston. Again, Antifa shows up dressed in black, faces covered with black masks, carrying AR-15s. When these members of Antifa were questioned, they had said that they were hired to be there. They did not know what the event was about. I think we can guess who maybe hired them to show up there. Now, this is straight out of the communist playbook. They're trying to provoke a violent confrontation. I would think that the London Bridge Resort would not want this kind of negative publicity, and certainly our city, as a resort tourist destination, would not want to be portrayed as unsafe to visit. I think we need to rethink this show in February. There's a lot of damaging events that could occur as a result of that. This past weekend, I was over in Yalva Pie County, and I got to meet Sheriff David Rhodes, who's a constitutional sheriff. And, you know, Sheriff Rhodes, he refused the federal grants due to the conditions in the contract that would require him to violate his oath to the Constitution of the United States of America, which is the supreme law of the land. I really regret that this did not happen here in our county and our city because this money that the government has given has caused many concerns, and so I think this is why they keep coming at us from different angles. We're under attack every day because we complied when we should have backed up and not accepted the money from the government that comes with. the money from the government that comes with strings attached. Anyway, I'm very concerned about possible violent events occurring here. I think we really need to look in carefully into this. It looks like it's becoming a trend around the country. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes speakers that have signed up. Would anyone else like to address the city council during call to the public? If so, just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Ginger Dotty, Lake Havasu City. Imagine, if you will, a city council that's known for six weeks that the drag show organizers have the pedophilia symbol on their website. Imagine, if you will, that only two members stood up. Do we want this to be your legacy? Councilman Lane, Councilman Dolan, Councilman Cameron, Councilwoman Coke, Mayor Cal, and City Manager Jess, do you want this to be your legacy? That known pedophiles, avyprideshow.org has the pedophile symbol. All of you were given this six weeks ago. Only two of you stood up. I want you guys on the record as your legacy to see if this is how you're going to be remembered as men and a woman who do not stand up for the children. This has always been about the children, and because you didn't do this, now we have $2 million that Go Lake Havasu has that apparently is for a rainy day? No, that's for a tsunami. We also have a vice mayor calling us bigots. And we have Terrence Concanon, who is the CEO of Go Lake Havasu, making $125,000 possibly, paid for by us. And he calls us, he says Havasu residents. He doesn't say, Jim, Mayor Dolan, or Vice Mayor Dolan did say, "In this room, there's bigots." But Terrence Concanon said Havasu residents are bigotry and hatred, and we pay a salary. All you would have had to do, the members I just mentioned, was to say, "Let's protect the children," and you didn't. And because of that, this has become so much bigger. This is going national, too. And you still, it's never too late to do the right thing. Thank you.
Please say it. Please state your name for the record.
Frankie Lyons, resident 17 years here. I've been here for the good, the bad, and the, oh my God, what are we doing? Our citizens are hurting because of the choices you people have made, the policies you're not enforcing, the misinformation you're giving to this city is just beyond belief. There's people up there, David, you and I had a conver, you asked me for a public apology. You're not going to get a public apology, me, for the lie that you said. I went to Gertler, and I got the letter from the city to Gertler requesting deconsolidation. We were not kicked out of there. That's a lie you guys have to live with, and it's not fair to this community to keep on putting on with the information that you're giving out. We have Jess over here, who wrote the contract for Go Lake Havasu. He's a voting member of, I believe it's the Visitors Bureau over there. That's a conflict of interest. And what he wrote in that contract, he's never enforced. So he's breached the contract that Go Lake Havasu has breached. They were supposed to give reports in before money, other money was given to them for the next quarter. That never happened. Members of this city council, including Jim Dolan, asked time and time again for those reports. Jess was sitting on them evidently, but Jim was a member of that board, that committee over there. Why didn't he bring it to the rest of these city council members? And we're sitting there with money that our kids could be benefiting from. Instead, it's sitting in somebody else's bank account, over $2 million, making interest we should be making. They didn't provide the services that they should have, although they did a great deal, and they've done a lot for this community, but they could have done better. And for us to be called bigots, if we have bigots in here who voted for Cal, they're not bigots. I'm sorry. And I think it's up to you to apologize to this city, not just Jim, but this entire city council and our city manager, to apologize for the degress in our ability to go forward with our city. You're making zoning changes that don't make sense. You're changing commercial property to residential. How are you going to bring commercial property in here if you're using it for residential? There's going to be a time, we won't have water. We won't have the services, the infrastructure that makes this city great, and you guys have destroyed it.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please. State your name for the record.
David Lerner. Good evening, city council and mayor. I came here to give you a little history lesson tonight. Everybody remembers 9/11, what happened on 9/11, and you know it was terrorists that brought it down, but it wasn't the terrorists from another country. You're going to have to start doing some research, okay? Right after that, a brand-new act was brought into law. It was called the Patriot Act. Do any of you know what the Patriot Act, Patriot, Patriot Act does? Do you? Let me tell you. They enacted the Patriot Act so they can get every one of your emails, every one of your texts, and everything about you. Everything. Think about that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to address the city council during call to the public? Please just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
As I make my way to the public, whatever that means, I just want to say once again, I will completely, all the time, thank you guys for ever showing up. I appreciate it every time, even those who can't agree with something. I think this is a great place.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Toy. And I wanted to let you know, last night, I went, sorry, pardon me, I went to the Parks and Rec meeting last night. That was really, really fun. I have to say that the board members asked a lot of questions, and then I saw a picture of the future of the downtown catalyst project. Oh my gosh, that is a really weird picture, and not at all what I was expecting the downtown catalyst project to look like, and really hope that you guys actually don't agree with that when it comes up to, to vote because, as it turns out, you guys have agreed to high density in our downtown area and haven't added extra parking into that project. And then there's a whole bunch of other issues that you never know. Funny thing about government, you guys are the ones in charge of it, and you guys actually are allowed to change your minds at the last minute, which brings me to the reminder that before tax season starts and before your tax season comes up, please remember that you did promise to look at possibly lowering next year's tax rates for the citizens. And I did get to mention at the call to the public, at the, for the Aquatic Center, to hopefully lower the price of the Aquatic Center. I just still would like to remind you that people would really like to be able to afford to go to the Aquatic Center and send their kids there during the summertime. Also, I didn't appreciate being called a bigot. I'm really sorry to tell you that. I don't think of myself as a bigot. I don't, I don't think so. Well, except for sugar. I don't eat sugary foods, so maybe I'm bigoted toward those things, but not people usually. And the young, the lady who somehow was pushed out of here because of her sign, the Protect Our Deserts, I don't, Christine, she's a really nice lady, and she was always reminding people to please protect our deserts. So I don't know what you guys can do to help remind people to protect and keep our deserts clean. I really do wish you guys would allow her to come back and put her signs up because those were kind of encouraging, really. Yeah, I think that's it tonight. Have fun.
Thank you, Ms. Toy. And everyone is welcome to attend our meeting, as evidenced by this evening. Would anyone else like to address the city council during call to the public? Yeah, please. No, you, you, just one opportunity, a call to the public. All right, seeing now we'll close the public, the call to the public at this time, but we will open up there, watch some criticism. Do any council members want to address any criticism?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Dolan.
I would like to respond to some criticism. Last meeting, the word bigot seemed to be pretty popular. It was passed around way before I said it. People were very adamant in their discussions that they weren't bigots, and of the 80-some-odd people in the room, based on comments I have heard, one or two or three of them say, they were very bigoted in their comments that I've heard in the past two and a half years. So while I did not call anybody a bigot, I didn't call anybody a bigot. I said there were bigots in the room, and it was a fact. There was at least one or two bigots in the room, and that's specifically what I said in my speech about all the other things that I discussed about. But to turn that around and twist it, I didn't call anybody a bigot, so.
Yeah.
I said patriot?
This is a business meeting where this is not a two-way conversation.
So the other thing is, with regards to the city handbook that Karen Vanderjack is, is talking about, it is a board and committee and commission member handbook. It's for appointed members to boards and commissions. It's not a city council handbook, so I'm sure there's our, also our other handbooks that I'm not following that also don't pertain to me, but this is for people that are appointed to boards and commissions. It's not for the city council itself. So I'm sorry that you keep quoting from that, but it's for appointed members to commissions. So that's all I have. Thank you so much for coming out. God bless.
Any other members want to respond to any criticism? All right, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda, item six. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Motion. Councilmember Lane.
Move to accept the consent agenda as proposed.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Lynn. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing in all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Oh, sorry, I got ahead of ourselves.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you. Yes, so for those.
You need another job, Cal?
No, I do not, but for those watching at home, we're having a little bit of trouble with our technology, so we are going to do voice votes throughout this meeting. If anyone is texting or looking to find the meeting, they can go to lhcaz.gov/tv to watch the meeting live, or of course, on Channel 4. So, sorry to jump into your lane, Ms. Williams, but I won't do it again. All right, moving on to item seven, correspondence, communications, petitions, announcements, and the city manager report. Item 7.1 is announce vacancies on Lake Havasu City boards, committees, and commissions. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mayor and city council. There are several vacancies on Lake Havasu City boards, committees, and commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Board of adjustment, three alternate members. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website at lhcaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 7.2 is our city manager's report. Good evening, Mr. Knutson.
Hi, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. To start this evening's report with recognition in our fire department. Mayor Sheehy, you and myself were honored to serve as the keynote speakers at the last fire department badge-pinning ceremony. It was an amazing evening, full of a lot of pride, a lot of tears, and a lot of smiles. I'd like to congratulate our new firefighters that were pinned, which is William Little, Ricky Beach, Thomas Platten, and Tim Nelson. They completed their probation and are officially welcome to the other team, the Havasu City team, as well as our fire department team. And a special congratulations for the promotions, and those were recognized for promotions up and down the department structure. Promotions went to Jason Stello, to Scott Green, to Scott Jacobs, and David Marias. And all of that was very, very well-deserved. Nothing like seeing a kid, seeing their, their father being pinned and a promotion, or earning, or earning that, the pin through a probationary period with tears and admiration in their eyes. So thank you, Chief Office, for putting that together and honoring our traditions. Some notable years of service is displayed on the screens in front of you. Some people have changed over the years, some more than others. On the left side, on the left of this slide is Terry Haas, and she was the chief executive assistant, and she retired early, earlier this month. Terry worked as a clerical office aide and admin specialist in development services from 2005 to 2007. Then she moved to the Public Works Department until 2014, and then from 2015 until just this month, where she finished out her career in the fire department. We'd like to thank Terry for her service to Lake Havasu City, and we wish her luck in her retirement. And on the right side, has not retired, is one of our fire engineers, it's Mark Martz, but I would like to recognize his efforts as he reached a milestone of working for Lake Havasu City for four decades, 40 years with Lake Havasu City. Mark started off as a paid-on-call firefighter back in 1982. He was hired full-time in 1987 and promoted to engineer in 1992. You might also recognize him from serving on the color guard for the fire department. I'd like to congratulate you, Mark, and thank you for your continued service and dedication to Lake Havasu City. We heard about two grant opportunities just with last, last week or so. We received notification from the, from FEMA for a FEMA Assistance to Firefighter Grant Program, or we call it AFG, and a Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response, otherwise known as SAFER Grant. The AFG Grant provides Lake Havasu City with $285,000 in funding, which would include a plus, a 10% match that comes from the city of about $28,000. This funding will help us in purchase of a, of a system to capture and extract diesel exhaust, exhaust fumes from our fire stations, something that is not in place right now and is a welcome improvement. And the SAFER Grant is a grant for a little over $4.1 million. There's no matching funds to the city, and this grant will be used to hire 11 firefighter paramedics or firefighter EMTs, and the SAFER Grant will cover 100% of each new employee's salary and benefit for three years. Lake Havasu City and the City of Phoenix were the only SAFER Grant awards as of September 21st in the state of Arizona. Thank you, Chief Polavis, for your determined and relentless leadership in your pursuit of these grants. Because of your efforts, the, and the efforts of your leadership team, we are bettering our ability to provide quality services to our community. Mayor and city council members, you've been very busy in the community, especially as we open up for our fall events. Councilmember Nancy Campbell, you attended the Rural Transportation Summit and spoke and represented Lake Havasu City and the Lake Havasu, Lake Havasu Metropolitan Organization. Vice Mayor Jim Dolan, councilmembers David Lane and Karen Moses presented a certificate of appreciation to pioneer John Milkovich on behalf of Mayor Sheehy and the city to thank him for his dedication and service to this community over the past 50 years. John was a local business owner of Desert Floors Interiors, is one of the two living original builders of the London Bridge, and started the Salvation Army here. No small feats. We recognize that, that our city would not be what it is today without pioneers like him, sharing the same frontier spirit as our founder, Robert P. McCullough, Sr., forging fellowships and friendships in the early days and building Lake Havasu City in what it is today, a thriving community and a tourist destination. Then Councilmember Dave, David Lane, you attended the Havasu Community Health Foundation's Hunger Awareness Fundraising Concert for the local food bank, presented proclamation on behalf of the city proclaiming the month of October as Hunger Awareness Month in Lake Havasu City. Last year, the Havasu Community Health Foundation reported our local food bank served, on average, 629 households each and every week, and distributed over 1 million pounds of food to our residents and that are in need or near homelessness. The city is grateful that, that our community is rich and caring for, with, rich and caring with our citizens and organizations such as the Havasu Community Health Foundation. On Saturday, Councilmember David Lane, you attended the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new Havasu Community Credit Union branch at the new location on the north side of Kiowa. And on Sunday, Mayor Sheehy, councilmembers David Lane and Nancy Campbell, you all attended the Gold Star Mothers Ceremony in honor of the mothers of fallen military service members. Although they have suffered unimaginable loss and pain, Gold Star Mothers of Lake Havasu City unselfishly foster patriotism by dedicating their time to helping local veterans and active members of the military service and bring comfort and hope to families whose loved ones lay down their lives in defense of our freedoms. Mayor and council, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson.
Thank you.
All right, move on to item eight, which is our public hearing, starting with item 8.1 is a Class B bingo license.
Mr. Mayor, I, I need to recuse myself from this item.
Oh, thank you, Councilmember. I was like, where's that coming from? Yeah, yeah. All right, so item 8.1, we'll have Councilmember Lynn recusing herself from this item, but it's a Class B bingo license application for River Cities United Way. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mayor and city council. Debbie Pennington has applied for a Class B bingo license for River Cities United Way. The bingo games will be held five days a week, Tuesday through Saturday, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. at Four Links, doing business as Win-Win Bingo, located at 5601 Highway 95. The application was reviewed internally, and no objections were received. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here to answer any questions from the council.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Are there any questions for Ms. Williams or the applicant for members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. for members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing them, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Dolan?
Motion.
Please.
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Revenue approve a Class B bingo license for River Cities United Way at 5601 Highway 95, the shops at Lake Havasu.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Dolan and we have a second from councilmember Lainey. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing them, we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Six, yeah, six.
Yes, I'm sorry. Has a council, six to zero with one councilmember recusal.
It was hard for me to refrain too. So I, no, it's just so used to say, it carries or not. So, all right, moving on to item eight point two is adopt ordinance number 22-1293 approving a planned development rezone for 2031 Industrial Boulevard, tract 115, block nine, lot 1A, from commercial C2 to general commercial plan development, C2 PD, to allow storage units. Mr. Morris?
Honorable mayor, councilmembers, thank you. Here's the area map. The subject property is about three quarters of, excuse me, two-thirds, start over, about one-third of an acre. It's currently used for open lot storage. It's located at the northwest corner, northeast corner of Industrial Boulevard and Bahama Avenue. A wash abuts the north side of the property. It's shown here outlined in red. The lots to the north across the wash and to the east are zoned C2 general commercial and developed with commercial uses. The property to the west across Bahama Avenue is zoned light industrial and also developed as a commercial use. The properties to the south across Industrial Boulevard are zoned multiple family and limited multiple family and developed with single-family homes. A little background information, in November of last year, 2021, the city council amended the permitted uses table to eliminate storage units as an allowed use in the C2 zoning district. The city council expressed concerns regarding prime commercial properties used for storage unit developments and stated publicly that the north and south entrances of the city should be protected. However, it was also mentioned that an applicant could still request a storage unit project through the planned development rezone process. Therefore, this applicant makes this request to rezone the property to allow storage units for RVs, boats, and similar items. Now, here's a conceptual site plan that was submitted with the request as required for the PD. It shows two 18-foot-tall buildings with a total of 10 storage units that are proposed. Building A has seven units and building B has three storage units. The buildings meet the setback standards, except for the northwest corner of building B appears to encroach into the 10-foot landscape buffer. The building's exteriors facing the streets are shown as a stucco finish and the other exteriors as steel siding and roll-up doors. Building color has not been indicated. The proposed landscaping for the project is more than adequate for the number of tree shrubs and decorative rock ground cover, but some of the landscaping plants need to be relocated out of the city's right-of-way and into the 10-foot landscape buffer. Any landscaping and building setback deficiencies will be addressed through design review and the permitting process for this project. Again, the city council suggested that storage units may be allowed in some C2 zoning districts through this PD plan development process if the proposed development fits into the neighborhood. The subject property is not located near a gateway into the city. It is in an area that has several existing commercial and light industrial uses with light industrial zoning across Bahama Avenue and commercial uses to the west and to the north. Storage units do not have a large traffic impact and are typically not noisy uses. The location lent itself well to the proposed small-scale storage unit development, and the planning commission recommended approval of this item by a vote of seven to zero. That concludes staff's presentation. Open any questions you may have. I believe the applicant is also in the audience. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Morris. So this was, this is actually the first one that's coming back before us using the PD process that we talked about in length during our discussion about limiting where storage units will go. So this is a good example of how that can work in a C2. Someone can come before the city, work through the process, and then bring it to planning and zoning and the council to have this discussion. Are there any questions for members of the council, for Mr. Morris, or for the applicant? Yeah, councilmember Moses?
Mr. Morris, so that C2 node that's right there, is that two separate lots?
That's correct. This is two separate lots.
Okay, so the lot to the, is that east?
East.
Is going to, is there a building there?
It's currently developed with a, some sort of commercial use. I don't recall what it is off the top of my head.
All righty. Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell, did you have a question for the applicant? Or Mr. Morris?
No discussion for us, though.
Oh, you know, do you have questions and comments? Talk? Yeah, this is where we're at.
I just wanted to remind my councilmembers, though, one thing that we've, I was always a fan of storage units because I believe they're a placement holder. They use no services and at this point, no water, other than landscaping. And also, we received about, what, 35% of our sales tax revenues from motor vehicles and items that are stored within these storage units. Again, this is not on the highway and it's in a perfect little location for even businesses that may need to store files for their businesses and others. So I am absolutely for this project because of those particular reasons. That's all I want to say.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
I have a question.
Yes.
We don't have the usage chart for the different zonings and for things that are allowed. Is, are storage units allowed in light industrial, the neighboring?
Yes, storage units are allowed in light industrial and industrial zoning.
Okay.
Under the revised, those were remained, those zoning districts still allows, still allow storage units, yes.
Okay, thank you, Luke.
Any other questions or comments before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and council, Don Wisdom. When I play golf, there's a lot of properties that are storage units, kind of looks like a house. But you didn't say residential are allowed, residential homes, they could put a storage unit in?
Mr. Morris, yeah, you can answer that question.
Storage units are not allowed in residential zoning districts?
Oh, okay.
Not to be confused with an RV garage, though, Mr. Wisdom. Yeah, so a storage unit. But there is a difference. So, but I just didn't want to confuse that that point. So RV garages are allowed in those districts. Would anyone else like to address the city council during this public hearing? All right, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for additional discussion or possible motion. Again, this item is coming through the planned development process that was set up during our discussion. It's also coming to us with a recommendation of seven to zero from our Planning and Zoning Commission. Any comments or thoughts or possible motion? Councilmember Moses?
I'm moved to adopt ordinance number 22-1293 for land use action number 22-3442 for a planned development rezone for 2031 Industrial Boulevard, tract 115, block nine, lot 1A, from general commercial to general commercial plan development to allow storage units with the following conditions. I didn't realize it's such a long one. I might have let Jim get it. The property shall substantially match the conceptual development plan provided with our request and attached as exhibit A to the ordinance and building permits and design review for compliance with the Development Code we required prior to development of the property.
We have a motion from councilmember Moses, a second from councilmember Campbell. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing them, we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item eight point three, which is introduce ordinance number 22-1294, amending Lake Havasu City Code Chapter 8.08, nuisances, revising definitions, updating and clarifying nuisances, and including criminal enforcement. Mr. Morris and Ms. Abel?
Honorable mayor and councilmembers, thank you very much. The nuisance code was updated on July 12, 2016. Since that date, code enforcement staff has used the code to regulate nuisances throughout the city. After six years of use, staff finds it beneficial to upgrade or update the code to align it with current practices, add language to address nuisances that were not specifically spelled out in the current code, and simplify all types of nuisances. The city's 2021 National Community Survey results found that 61% of residents that responded wanted the city to focus on issues such as trash, auto parts, dead landscaping, and unusable items visible from the right-of-way and adjacent properties. Based on these factors, some of the major changes in this ordinance include clarifying that junk, inoperable vehicles, or inoperable watercraft are not allowed in the front yard, in the side yard, or rear yard unless screened from the right-of-way by means of a side obscuring wall or hedge, in the side or rear yard unless screened from neighboring properties by means of a side obscuring wall, hedge, or concealed by a fitted cover. It does not limit the number of or location of registered, insured, inoperable vehicles or watercraft on a property. Here's some examples of inoperable vehicles. These are vehicles that are not allowed per the current code or the proposed code, so this is not changed. Situations like this are not allowed where there's inoperable vehicles in the yards. More examples of inoperable vehicles that are not allowed. This one also shows that the proposed code clarifies that a fitted cover on an inoperable vehicle is not allowed in the front yard or if visible from the right-of-way. So here's some examples of fitted covers that on inoperable vehicles that do not, would not meet the current code. It will not meet the revised code for sure. It clarifies that those are not allowed. Here are some examples of operable vehicles. So the revised code continues to allow operable vehicles and watercraft to be kept in any yard, including front yards. This has not changed. So here's vehicles that are parked on or off the driveway. They're allowed in any yard if they're operable. Here's some other examples that vehicles also include things like trailers and watercraft and RVs. So these are, again, examples of currently, if these vehicles are operational, insured, they're okay to be in the front yard or any yard. That hasn't changed at all. Some other major changes include updating and reordering the definitions and nuisance descriptions. For example, we changing the title of junk vehicle to inoperable vehicle slash watercraft and requiring proof of current insurance for operable, operable watercrafts and vehicles. The revisions also make it easier to understand the various types of nuisances and groups than by type. It also adds section dealing with landscaping maintenance and weeds. It also adds an option of criminal enforcement by the city prosecutor's office. This will provide the ability to go straight to a criminal prosecution if deemed appropriate for certain situations. That concludes staff's presentation. Be happy to go over any of the, review any of the proposed changes with the city council. We also have our code enforcement, senior code enforcement officer Denise Abel here to help answer questions for you also. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Yeah, so this item comes before the city council based on our discussion that we had at our annual planning session, where the council committed and directed staff to bring additional resources for code enforcement. We did that with the approval of our budget that started on July 1 to bring an additional code enforcement officer. The discussion that we had at that time was to make small incremental changes that will make big impacts based on the largest number of complaints that we receive. So city staff took a look at the current code to ensure our current practices were being followed by the code. The recommended changes that Mr. Morris went over is what came of that. The intent is still to have code enforcement that is reactive, meaning citizens would have to file a complaint or advise the city in some sort of way, will then respond and act accordingly. Generally, those inquiries are resolved within that initial conversation, but in the extreme cases where they're not, or in the unfortunate situations where neighbors cannot get along with each other and they use this mechanism to cause issues for each other, this gives some clarity in the code for both our citizens and staff to be able to address or mitigate whatever the issue may be. So that's just my way of history of kind of how we got here, why we're doing it. You know, some folks might say this is too much, some might say that it's too little, but we're just trying to find a happy medium where we can keep our neighborhoods beautiful, but also ensure that people have the private enjoyment of their personal property. So I do have a couple of questions, if I may, maybe for Ms. Abel. On the number of these proposed code changes that we have in front of us, what percentage-ish do they represent of your total complaints that you receive or deal with in a period?
Of which codes?
Like vehicles that are not operable or vehicles that are bricks, those types of things.
Inoperable vehicles would probably be in the 40% range. I think we, 35, 40% range of all of our reports.
Fantastic. Yes, this will address a good, a good number of those issues. And then was my statement accurate that generally when you make initial contact with a citizen that may be violating code, that compliance is generally comes into, they come into compliance pretty readily? Is that a true statement or?
Yes, I would say maybe 50% of the time they comply within, you know, the given time, which is a week. If they ask for, you know, a little bit more time, that's fine. But after that, we do send violation correction notices, which gives them an additional 30 days to comply. And of those, usually they'll take care of it by then.
Great. And then with the additional investment that council approved in the current budget, it was my understanding that we are going to keep the same methodology that we have today, which is you're fabulous at what you do and you communicate with our citizens that might have a complaint alleged against them in a really fantastic way. Are you seeing that moving forward with the additional code enforcement officer that is on?
Absolutely. Yeah, she fit right in like a shoe, just right in.
Yeah, fantastic. Are there any other questions from other members of the council? Vice Mayor Dolan?
I have a concern. Being that it's a nuisance, you know, looking at the landscaping section, I had a good citizen come to me about this, that he had a shed in his backyard, tipped over in the storm. He rents the house to somebody. He didn't know what happened. So, you know, a neighbor turns him in. Okay, he went out, cleaned up everything, put everything back to normal. But now it sounds like, you know, we're being very strict with the palm trees. And I guess the question to me is, you know, if we, I'm just concerned with the nuisance versus not perfectly landscaped properties. Because I mean, with the palm trees being there, we have so many palm trees in Havasu. It basically says that there's the dry fronds, for example, if they, if someone doesn't have a perfectly trimmed tree there in violation of code. But to me, that's just like, my concern is, is it might be a little unrealistic that well, if we enforce that on somebody, then they're just going to go take pictures of trees all over town. And then, and I don't get me wrong, I have a couple in my backyard. I'd love to call on people. But it does seem a little, I guess that's my current, it's a little too, might be a little too overreaching on our part, I guess.
It's more for the unkempt trees, anything that's not maintained, palm trees maybe that are completely dead with nothing, no fronds on them anymore, ones that rats harbor in. I mean, that's, that's what we have a big problem with. And then the palm fronds that are falling down onto neighboring properties in the roadways and whatnot, those are the ones we want to address.
Okay.
And it's like, report generated still. We don't drive around and, you know.
But they will once they, because everyone's like, well, that's not fair. They get to do it. And then, well, okay, well, you know, they start giving tickets to everybody or making everyone trim all their trees. You know, like I said, I try to remind people we're also not an HOA here in Lake Havasu. People want a little bit of that freedom with their properties and I don't want to bang on everyone's door and say, oh, no, no, you can't paint this, you can't do that, you know. So that's my concern with landscaping.
Okay, thank you.
And I join Vice Mayor Dolan in that comment. So my trees are low enough where I can get on a ladder and cut my palm fronds. At my mom's house, there's three of them that I can get to, but there are two that I cannot. And when we call for folks to cut down the dry, the dry fronds of the palm tree, they're just so delayed. They couldn't get there till mid-July this year. And so for my colleagues on the council, if you go to our council communication on page three under the underlying item of the proposed changes, letter D talks about the landscaping that Vice Mayor Dolan had mentioned. Would you be willing to, line one, two, three, four, line four, it starts at the very end, just taking away the word dry fronds. So dead trees certainly would be addressed, but dry fronds would not be against the code, which would, I mean, it's just, folks are going to take care of their stuff, but it would right now be a violation of code. And I don't know if that would suffice Vice Mayor Dolan for your concerns.
Because some people just don't, they just fall naturally and they never trim them. And we have a lot of those in town and it's, you know.
Yeah, Palm Springs is a city that cherishes those on their trees. So not that. Yeah, Palm Springs is a city that that cherishes those on their trees, so not that it happens here in Lake Havasu, but so if my colleagues are on board for that, we can, if it's successful, take that into consideration when a motion is made. Any other questions, comments, thoughts from members of the council? Please, Councilmember Campbell?
Thank you. Thank you both for writing this up. I was a part of this with the landscaping and a lot of abandoned commercial buildings in this community, and they're overgrown and very dry. And even when I was campaigning, I had several people say, do something about this. So I'm so glad we're moving forward. Thank you both for handling this and doing such an amazing job, and I'm sure that you'll handle all these complaints moving forward. I did have a question earlier today. Mayor came and spoke, and we were asked, what about commercial in the 200 square feet of junk per inoperable? We have obviously commercial buildings that have fences and storage, you know, outdoor storage units. That concerns me. I'm sure it's been addressed appropriately, but I wanted the citizens to be aware that if you own a storage unit in an industrial or a light industrial area, that would you be, this is not of your concern, or do you have some concerns that they need to update and do a better job at?
Thank you for the question. This proposed code does say junk yards are not allowed, except where they are allowed per the zoning district. So outdoor storage includes, for lack of another word, it could include junk yards. So they are allowed in some industrial, light industrial, industrial, and in C2 with a conditional use permit. So it doesn't affect those that are legally allowed per the zoning district for outdoor storage.
It's like an auto body shop that has or a boat repair shop that has fences around it, they're perfectly okay to store whatever is inoperable or what we consider junk there, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
But if an auto body shop is parking their cars on the lot next door, they'll be, they could potentially be called on.
That's correct, yeah. They'd have to beat something that meets the code, and typically they need to be screened by six foot, minimum six foot screening device.
Yeah, so when it comes to those commercial areas that are currently operating in that fashion now that are not screened, which I would say is a lot of different mechanic shops, what do we do to address that? I don't think that's the intent of this council is to change that.
The intent is not to change anything with the commercial aspect. Of course, these may apply to commercial properties, and we are report driven, so if we receive something, we will check it out. Many of the businesses that operate in town have been in here in town for a long time, and the codes may have changed, so they may be considered legal nonconforming. That's those are things we would look at when we receive a report if for something like that. Thank you.
After I read, excuse me, after I read this, I was going down the highway, and of course, there's a lot of light industrial tile shops, you name it, the backend of their building is facing the highway, which is in complete view, and there's a lot going on behind there, because it's behind their, you know, operable, I mean, where they do land loading and unloading and so on. Is this a concern, or do they need to start considering screening that somehow?
Well, that was not necessarily a concern that this was intended to address. I don't think it really changes anything that is allowed or required for the industrial and commercial type uses. So they would still, that's basically going to be unchanged because of this code section.
Thank you, because when if I get these questions, I want to be able to answer them properly. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, Luke, good job. You know, last time we talked about this, which was like six years ago, we had a lot of citizens that were very upset because they thought we were trying to limit the amount of toys that they could have in their their yard, and I think you did a really good job of showing the difference between people having toys in their yard and people having junk in their yard. And that's why we wanted to to bring this forward was to get rid of the junk. Denise, you hear from me a lot. We work together on a lot of these properties. Thank you. A lot of times, we're only going through the Havasu Now app, but I do appreciate your quick response, so thank you for all of that.
Thank you.
You know, the biggest issue we're having is some of these junk properties, and our concern was the trash that's building up. Chief can tell you, we just had a fire this afternoon on one of these junk properties that Denise has been working on, and I don't think she'll have to take the gentleman to court now, because I think the thing burnt to the ground. But there was a lot of junk there, and my concern was for the firefighters that were responding to that location, and then the the police officers that are there, they're doing traffic control, and our CERT team that is there rehabbing people, and it was quite a large fire. And this should eliminate a lot of those issues. So getting rid of the junk is what we're trying to do, and still allowing people to have fun with their toys here in Lake Havasu, and I think this covers that. So thank you, Luke.
Any other comments before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Yeah, please, just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
My name's Emiliano Torres, live here in town. Just have a quick question on this inoperable. Does that include only registered and licensed vehicles? Or can you have a vehicle that's not licensed, and then it's considered inoperable? Just a general question.
Yeah, great question. Yeah, Ms. Abel?
Yes, and under the definition, it does state that they must be currently registered and insured to be considered operable, and of course, run.
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Thank you. And also, just for the for the record, Denise uses a lot of common sense when it comes to this. So if you have your piece of, you know, 1922 Ford out in the front yard as yard art, she doesn't consider that an inoperable vehicle as yard art. So it's she uses a lot of discretion, and she's very fair with with people, so thank you for that.
Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor, just one more question.
Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
Can you take me through the steps, kind of the escalation process of how you gain compliance?
Once the report is received, currently, since I had been by myself for quite some time, I call the citizens. So I try to make contact either on the phone or in person, and let them know what the violation is, request them to clean it up, and let them know there are consequences, but I will work with them. And after one week, I'll do a recheck and check the property. If it's not cleaned up, I send a violation correction notice, and that gives them an additional 30 days. And sometimes life happens, and we can extend that as long as there's progress going on.
And then after that?
After that, it will go to a citation. So a citation can be written and go to court. If they don't comply with that, or the problem continues, then we can go to the city prosecutor and file criminal charges.
And were the fines or the citations in here? I don't think there are.
The fines and citations are in the, on chapter 1.12, I believe, which is a separate section for just how things get resolved. This deals with the nuisances themselves and describes them, so it's a separate section.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and to follow up on Councilmember Moses's comment, how, what's that timeline? Do you have to go to prosecution, or do you have to go that route?
Prosecution, I, it can take anywhere from two months to two years, depending on the extensions and the judge judges' decisions and the progress that the citizen is making.
How often do you go that far?
It's only been a few times for me.
Good. Okay. And I want to echo the sentiments. I think you do a great job of common sense approach.
Thank you.
I was going to ask about yard art just more, because I know you do a great job with it. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell, please.
I move to introduce ordinance number 22-1294, amending Lake Havasu City Code, Chapter 8.08, nuisances, revising definitions, updating and clarifying nuisances, including criminal enforcement, to and to remove dried fronds from that.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Campbell, a second from Vice Mayor Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item 8.4, introduce ordinance number 22-1295, amending Lake Havasu City Code, Chapter 1.12, code compliance, adding section 1.12.025 interference. Mr. Morris?
Honorable Mayor, council members, this is a little bit of a companion piece to the previous item. Code compliance that Chapter 1.12 was updated on July 12, 2016. Since that date, city staff has determined that it would be useful to add a section to help ensure the safety of code enforcement officers, similar to protection given to animal control officers. The proposed amendment adds language specifying that it's a class one misdemeanor to interfere with city employees or contractors in pursuit of code enforcement duties. A class one misdemeanor allows a fine up to $2,500 and/or up to six months of jail time. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. So I, before, we'd had, we had no protections for our code enforcement officers at all. So we're sending code enforcement out for pretty, some are pretty high-risk areas for people that have elevated temperaments based on whatever that complaint may be. We afford this, obviously, to our public safety folks and to our animal control officers, and this language here just mirrors that to give our code enforcement officers the same protections that we afford to our animal control officers. Are there any questions, comments, or thoughts before we open the public hearing? All right, seeing none, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter?
Hey, I was just curious, why is it only code enforcement office that get, oh, Bonnie Toy, just in case you need to know that. Why is it only code enforcement that gets the extra protection, why not the other departments that happen to be doing other services for the city, you know, like wastewater or water department or other departments that go out to people's houses? Why is it only code enforcement that is being changed? Don't other departments need that protection also in case they go to somebody's house and are confronted?
Yeah, no, thank you for for the question. So this is a companion item to the code enforcement discussion we're having in a broader perspective. That's why it's brought to us right now. But maybe Mr. Knutson, if you have a a comment on potentially the other departments, we do have afforded protections for our public safety personnel, animal control officers, and then if this is successful this evening, it would also include our code enforcement officers. Mr. Knutson?
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor and council, Ms. Toy, the reason why this is included in this section, too, is in in relation to the the conversations about code enforcement, is animal control, code enforcement, they're out there enforcing the law, which is a little bit different than than interactions on and from a customer service or service providing aspect. So that's why they're contained in this this section of the of the code.
Okay, but if you have other departments that are going to someone's home and being attacked or mistreated by homeowners, shouldn't they also be protected? Can't you just include them at the same time as you're doing, make it one rule for everybody who works in Lake Havasu City? Like, imagine if the city manager showed up at my house to tell me that I violated something. Could I attack him and be okay and not have to worry about fines?
Well, the great news is, Ms. Toy, we don't really have that happening to our employees, fortunately, but Mr. Tinneman.
He hasn't been to my house yet.
Yeah, Mr. Tinneman, behind you, Ms. Toy, may have a clarifying point for that.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Just to clarify that for you, when when wastewater, water goes out, and they do have an issue, they call code enforcement. So if they do have an issue, they give code enforcement a call, and we work with them, and we make contact through this code section. So that's how we're pretty much protected. They won't get into the nuts and bolts, per se, of the issue. They'll turn that over to us, and then we'll use our tools, which is this, to deal with that citizen. Hopefully, that'll.
Thank you, Mr. Tinneman.
Mayor?
Councilmember Campbell?
One statement to Mrs. Toy that I kind of agree, because being in the streets department, it is amazing, we have problems, but we have to call the police to come out, because people will drive, run you over, you know, take out your cones, aggressively attack you because you're you're not allowing them to get in their driveway. So I would think that that, under those circumstances, it would be best to just call the police department at that point, because they're not literally citing citing you, and that's what we had to do. So that's just a statement out there. Be nice to your street people, too.
Would anyone else like to address the council during this public hearing item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Motion?
Please.
I move to introduce ordinance number 22-1295, amending Lake Havasu City Code, Chapter 1.12, code compliance, adding sections 1.12.025 interference.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Dolan, and we have a second from Councilmember Moses. Any additional comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Great, thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to item 8.5, approved with the cooperative purchase agreement with TYMCO, Inc., through the contract with the Houston Galveston Area Council, and purchase of a 2023 600 regenerative air sweeper. Mr. Young?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm here to ask for a sweeper. We currently have three of the Timco's 600 regenerative. They are way beyond their points in getting rid of their, concurrently at 14, 16, and 17 years old. We've been limping them down the roads for a few years now. We can do use some new equipment with that, and it is available through the Houston Galveston Area Council Cooperative Agreement, and we would like to start rebuilding that. When we get get the new one in, it's about nine months out, we'll decide which ones limp them the worst, and we'll ship it off. They probably should be really turned over about every five to eight years, 10 years at the most. They take a lot of abuse with the way they operate to get the best money back, to reinvest in the new stuff. We've pushed these to their points at this point. So I'd like to move forward with requesting permission to purchase a brand-new 2023 Timco 600 regenerative air sweeper. If you have any questions, I'm more than willing to answer.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Young. Our roads and sweeping our roads is so, so important. So we are do have a contract to fully sweep our entire community, a minimum of two times a year, up to three times a year. So a company comes in and basically sweeps us all in a couple of days. But this additional ancillary equipment that the city would own will take care of storm cleanup, any issues or spills that occur in between those areas, any high-traffic road areas, and our equipment right now does not work. So it's it's a really important investment that we need to make to help protect our roads and and give our staff the the tools to do their job. Any questions or comments for Mr. Young?
Mr. Mayor, I just have a quick question.
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Who who right now maintains these vehicles? Do we have somebody in-house that's able to maintain?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember Moses?
How often do we get out there and use these machines as it stands?
Currently, we do it in emergencies, and we try to do it, unfortunately, after, well, not the last one, but prior to the last five prior to that citywide sweeps, we got storms right after that, so we had to put them out to handle all the storm cleanup immediately after the city got swept. So it's kind of a rough time, but we should be sweeping probably citywide sweeps three or four, five times throughout, especially with the mains and stuff, after the other companies come in, and we'd be able to if we had some functioning sweepers that were able to run longer than a couple of days before putting them in the shop and working on them.
Yeah, I know a lot of citizens are going to be very grateful for this. And this is just a curiosity question. Do they still work in those washes? Like, there's a big wash near my house, and I'm driving through them all the time, where that the dirt after a big storm really, really builds up?
We, yeah.
Or do you still have to go get a loader for that?
You still have to get a loader and get the heavy stuff off there. It'd be the same way on the highway if we're going down the highway, for instance, if you got some big chunks of wooden stuff, you got to get out and pick that stuff up and get it out of the way. It's just the nature of the sweeper.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any additional questions? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item?
Again, on Lake Havasu Avenue, by
Again, on Lake Havasu Avenue by, name of that dumb street, huh? A coma is been under repair for-
Months.
Months. Nothing seems to be done, has a sign up there, slow down. They got cones out there. Uh, and this gentleman sounded like they do cleanup, but that's not cleaned up. It's a mess out there. So is there any plans for that?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Wisdom. Uh, different, that, that's not a cleanup, that's a, a road repair, uh, replacement, actually. So, uh, back in the spring, we had, uh, a major, uh, water main break, uh, leak in that area, and it, uh, was, uh, quite damaging. Uh, we, uh, took emergency action to, to get that repaired. Uh, council approved the, uh, the purchase of the pipe and the repair and the road work, uh, that is associated with that, but, uh, we had supply chain issues. So we're still waiting on, on the piping. It should be here in October, is my understanding. And, uh, once it gets here, we'll, we'll get that, uh, uh, main repaired fully, and then we will pave and redo the entire road. So it'll be very smooth. You're not gonna lose or chatter your teeth out, uh, like you do right now. Uh, but for, uh, from a cost savings perspective, we could have patched and paved that roadway, knowing we're gonna have to tear it right back up just three months later. Uh, and so we elected, uh, to, uh, do the conservative thing, put signs up. We've been advising citizens, um, at every public outreach opportunity we have, we know that road area is horrible, we will be addressing it, we're just waiting for that pipe to get in, and then that roadway will be completely repaved, and it'll be very nice between, um, that Akoma intersection and Kila. So thank you for bringing that up. Mr. Mayor? Uh, Councilmember Lane?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring this up as well because we talked about this, um, a couple meetings ago, uh, about that section of road. At the time, the city manager brought up, by just patching it like it is and not completely repairing it while, because we're gonna tear it back up to replace everything underneath, we're saving forty thousand dollars. So it's a, a big chunk of change by just leaving the patch down there for a couple months. Yes, it, it looks bad and yes, it's bumpy, but we're saving the taxpayers forty thousand dollars by not repairing it completely and then tearing it back up three months later.
And we just told everyone in, uh, that's watching this meeting, and, uh, thank you for, for that question. Uh, would anyone else like to address the council on, uh, this public hearing item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Yes?
I move to approve the auth, and authorize the city manager to sign the multi-term cooperative purchase agreement with TYMC O Inc., utilizing Houston Galveston Area Council Contract SW zero-four dash twenty through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, and authorize city staff to exercise the option to renew and to purchase a two thousand twenty-three six hundred regenerative air sweeper in the amount of three hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and eighty-one and thirty-six cents.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Moses, a second from Vice Mayor Dolan. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item eight point six is award bid for the biological odor control systems for wastewater treatment plants to Eco Verde LLC. Mr. Fernando?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Odor control is essential for the operation of the wastewater treatment plant. Without that, strong odors are released into the air, which impact the residents in the area. Here is a, a picture of, uh, two systems what we have. This is a no-treatment plant, and this is the, uh, Mulberry. Uh, they were installed during the sewer expansion and are at the end of their life. These systems, uh, use chemicals. And the chemical odor control may utilize bleach or caustic as a scrubbing agent. Cost of these chemicals have gone up a lot, and we came to you twice this year for price-increase approvals. These chemicals, chemicals are hazardous, corrosive, and destroys system components that result in high maintenance costs. Our existing units, uh, also use a large amount of soap water produced by water softener stations. Uh, here is how the biological scrubbers, uh, work. Uh, they treat gaseous contaminants in an air stream by passing through a bed of microorganisms, basically bacteria, which feed on odor-cozy molecules such as hydrogen sulfide, which is the stuff you smell usually, uh, like a rotten egg smell. Uh, biological, biological scrubbers use plant nutrients such as garden fertilizer products by eliminating the need of chemicals. These systems do not require storage, handling, or use of hazardous chemicals. Therefore, significantly lower in the operating cost. Use of portable water is completely eliminated by using treated water from our wastewater treatment plants. So this slide show, uh, the, uh, new scrubbers we are going to install. Several years ago, we have converted island treatment plan chemical system with a biological system, and we are pleased with the results. Also, many larger lift stations use smaller biological odor control units. Therefore, we recommend awarding a bid to Eco Verde in the amount of, uh, nine hundred thirty-three thousand and seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Fernando. Yeah, so this particular item is in our, uh, capital plan. So this is, uh, the official, um, action for us to, um, approve, uh, what we've already approved in the capital, um, plan and also in the budget, uh, to move forward, uh, with this. Obviously, uh, as Mr. Fernando mentioned, we've had, uh, two rate increases come before council, which means that there are significant increases, uh, uh, because of, uh, the, the cost of chemicals rising and also the uncertainty of being able to get, uh, some of the chemicals. So, uh, this will help, uh, transition that in addition to allow, um, our equipment to last longer without the corrosive areas and protecting our team members, uh, certainly from, from these, uh, caustic environments. Uh, comments or questions for Mr. Fernando?
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
Yeah, I, I mean, anytime we can eliminate chemicals from our, our city is, uh, for the best, right? How much do we spend on chemicals a year on one of these things, uh, if we want to replace this with the, with the new system?
For these two systems, we spend about close to one-third of a million. So in about four years, we should be able to recover the cost since we are not using chemicals.
I think that's a wonderful plan, and I thank you for bringing it to us.
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Thank you, and correct me if I'm wrong. You also said this uses reclaimed water. We're not using fresh water, so we're also saving water.
Correct.
Which is a big savings to the city for our water usage.
We, we will, we will save millions of gallons of portable water.
Millions of gallons of water.
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you for that.
Uh, one question.
Councilmember Campbell?
Uh, can you explain to me on the bid tabulations, I see that, um, Evoqua Water Technologies bid came in at eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand versus the nine hundred and thirty-three thousand. I was wondering why, why we, uh, didn't go with lowest bid. Is there, uh?
And it's weird that they're listed twice.
What happened was, uh, they came up with a-
No difference.
-combination of biological and chemical system. So we, our goal was to eliminate all the chemicals, so that didn't, that didn't work for us.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense to me. So it's just a better product in the end, and it was worth the extra money. Thank you so much.
Yeah, so if I understood that correctly, one was the chemical bid and one was the, uh, biological bid.
Yeah, the higher one, like two million dollars, that was the complete biological.
Yes.
The other one was a combination of two.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions or comments before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go for it, Jim.
I'd like Cameron to make a motion again.
Councilmember Moses?
I do, I do all the heavy lifting, Jim, huh? Uh, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I move to award the bid for a biological odor control system for wastewater treatment plants to Eco Verde LLC in the amount of nine hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars and seventy, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Moses, a second from Vice Mayor Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. All of the favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, and our final, uh, public hearing this evening is item eight point seven, approve a sole source purchase of a rebuild and upgrade of the Five Star Filtration Disc Filter System and On-Site Startup Supervision for the Island Wastewater Treatment Plant from Five Star Filtration LLC. Mr. Fernando?
The wastewater treatment consists of three main stages. The last stage is called the tertiary treatment, where water is filtered before disinfection. Uh, the Island Wastewater Treatment Plant was initially placed in operation in nineteen sixty-five. That's quite a while ago. Uh, at present, the Island Treatment Plant has two filtration systems. This is called the sand filter, which was installed in nineteen eighty-six during the expansion to treat two and a half million gallons of wastewater per day flow. And the second filter, which is called, which we call the disk filter, was installed in two thousand fourteen. However, disk filter was, has been offline for the past four years due to failure of key parts and the lack of capacity during high wastewater flows. The sand filter has been primarily filtration process and desperately need repairs. No major repairs were performed since its installation. As you can see in this picture, the rails, anchors, concrete, and many other components need attention. Funds were originally budgeted to repair the sand filter. However, it was found that the plant requires a long time shutdown to facilitate these repairs. Another option we came up is to place the disk filter in line. So we contacted the company, which is the Five Star Filtration, and, uh, asked their opinion. So they came up with a proposal to rehab, upgrade, and onsite startup with a five-year warranty. This new design can handle the high peak flows as well. Once this project is over, we can repair the sand filter and keep it as a backup. So the staff recommends approval of sole source purchase of a rebuild and upgrade disk filter system for island treatment plant from Five Star Filtration in the amount of hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Fernando. Yeah, so the, in our packet, there is the, uh, uh, Five Star Filtration justification for the sole source purchase. They, they installed this unit, uh, initially in two thousand fourteen. Uh, as, uh, Mr. Fernando had mentioned, uh, we knew about this several years ago, and we, we took a staged approach, uh, one from a fiscal perspective and also to determine what, what the best system was going to be, uh, going forward. Uh, there is, uh, money, uh, budget in the, the budget that we approved, uh, this started on July one. So any questions or comments from members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor, motion?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I move to approve the sole source purchase of a rebuild and upgrade of the Five Star Filtration Territorial Disc Filtration System and On-Site Startup Supervision for the Island Wastewater Treatment Plant from Five Star Filtration LLC in the amount of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fernando. Item nine on our agenda is current events. Are there any council committee reports?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Um, last night, we had a Parks and Rec, um, monthly board meeting, and Director Keen, um, gave an update on the pickleball court donation, um, the new air conditioning system and, uh, downtown catalyst project, and I just encouraged the community and our other council members to take a look at some of the feedback that we got from the board members. That's it.
Great, thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
Um, I wanted to tell you, let everybody know that I was very honored to be a part of the Rural Transportation Summit, where I spoke with a lot of state transportation, um, committee members and board members. And the bottom line is, is we, I am so incredibly proud of our budget, where we have actually put, for the first time ever, ten million dollars of funding out of our general funds to repair our roads and streets. So, um, congratulations to everybody on the council for moving forward and letting Lake Havasu City see that. So it was really an honor to be able to let all the legislation know that we are putting our money out there, and my topic was, uh, sharing is caring when it comes to funding. So hopefully, it, that's a good statement, sharing is caring. And so I was really trying to get them to add to our ten million dollar budget, and it looks pretty positive. But the most exciting part was, uh, the state legislation will be here on October twenty-first. We will be hosting them here in, uh, the council chambers. Well, the night before, uh, they wanted to, uh, the, Justin, our MPO, wanted to, um, sponsor a dinner because they're driving from all over the state to be in our presence. And unbeknown to us, we were looking for a sponsor to cover the dinner. It happened to be that SUNT, S-U-N-D-T Construction, will be sponsoring this event. Well, the exciting part is SUNT is the original contractor of the London Bridge, who was sitting right next to us, and has offered to, uh, help buy dinner for, uh, the state, uh, transportation people to come out and have our, it's their fourth, it's been four years since they've been out, I guess. So we're really excited, and I hope all the council can join us to, with that event. We have some great things planned, and, um, we're really excited for the community because we're hoping to get even more funding for our roads. And never forget that Representative Leo Biasucci did a phenomenal job getting us, um, Highway forty, uh, repaved, and we are talking about, uh, going out to bids at the end of this year. So that's my update.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, excuse me, Highway ninety-five, not forty. You're absolutely right, Councilmember Lane.
Yeah, thank you for, for the update. That's, uh, in this, that's the State Board of Transportation. They meet around the state, and so that's on October twenty-first. They'll, they'll be here nine AM in this room, uh, for a public, uh, hearing, and that's an opportunity to meet with, uh, the board members and talk about road, uh, issues that, uh, you may experience throughout the state, uh, which are many, uh, as you drive, uh, those state roads. Any other council committee reports? All right, uh, the future meetings, our next meeting is going to be on Tuesday, October eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, at six PM. We'll have a regular meeting. And then on Tuesday, October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, at six PM, we will also have a regular meeting. Item eleven, are there any future discussion items? Item twelve, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn. Uh, thank you all for being here. Be kind, and we'll see you next time.